That we live in that provides us an opportunity to be a part of a education system that provides education to every child. And we just ask that as we had this opportunity that we would take it seriously and that we would work diligently to make a difference in making this world a better place to be. I thank you for the meeting that we have this evening, for the work of our Board of Education. We pray that as we gather to make decisions that you would give us wisdom and guidance and help us do things that would bring honor and glory to you. And we thank you for your love and your blessings upon our community and our school system. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, we need to approve the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, a motion by Tom and a second by Kristen. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? And then we move to the presentation and discussion items. And first, we have Dr. Salome with policy JBC four revisions.
Good afternoon.
How's your first day of school been?
It's been good.
Good.
And all the schools that I've been to have been just delightful. Doesn't even look like a first day of school. I am bringing to you today code JB, policy JBC four. This is a current policy that we've had, and I need to update it and have laid on the table for you all to vote at my suggested updates next month, please. And the reason we need to do this is the State Board of Education adopted a new rule in the spring, and they titled it awarding units of credit. So I want to hit the highlights. You'll see the strike throughs, all that's red are a new addition so that you can kind of follow through. First of all, we updated the Transnational Association of Christian Colleges and Schools. That's no longer a title, so we just, while we were cleaning up, we cleaned that up. The next part are definitions. It comes right out of the policy that the State Board voted on, so that we are following all the current definitions. Another part right there is the applicability. That tells who it applies, this applies to. And as you can see, no matter when a student enter ninth grade, this policy will now apply to them. You know, often we have policies that depending on what year you entered high school, it would apply or it wouldn't apply, but this applies to all students. The next section, requirements for granting credit, is exactly the same as you've been doing, and we've all acted on that. On number two, we deleted item number three because we can no longer require them to bring that information to us from homeschool, so we deleted that. But all, but in section A of number three, if we need to consider if a homeschooler or a public not accredited student came in from a, or a private school student came in, and we're trying to decide how we want to award their credit, we might ask them to give us a review of their course materials. So while we are, we can't require it, we would probably be asking for it to make sure that we gave them proper credit. You will see that awarding units of credit for dual enrollment courses, we have added this, and as you know, we are growing that program quite diligently through our work with our secondary schools, and so we will follow the State Board of Education rule for all awarding of units of credit when they take a high school class through a post-secondary institution. The next part is kind of interesting. It's a new thing with the policy and State Board of Education, and it gives us the ability to give academic credit for CTAE courses that have embedded academic core standards. Now presently, there are none of those courses, but we, all the systems across the state have been encouraged to write them and to submit them. So at the moment, we don't have any, but we did go ahead and include it in our policy so that as those courses are out there, we will be able to offer them. The subject area competency to receive course credit, this is the one that you've probably heard the most about, and it has to do with testing out. We have, now our students are able, if they take an E O C T test and score exceeds, they can get unit credit for that versus having to take the course and then take the E O C T. So this tells them how to do that. Actually, we sent out a letter on August the first to all our students telling them how you qualify for that, so they all have that information. But this puts it in your policy and says that we will award a unit of credit if a student takes the E O C T and it, and receives a score of exceeds. They have to.
But even, I thought the end of the year course, the test, was only like 20% of students' grade.
It is if you take the course.
Okay.
But now.
So they don't even have to, so this will be the whole thing.
You can't even have taken the class. You must not have tried the course. If you tried the course, you take the E O C T, it is 20% of your grade.
Okay.
But if you have not attempted the course, but you think you can do well on it, you can take an E O C T. You can get up to three credits, so you can't take all of your E O C T courses. And in fact, the procedures are that the first three you do pass are the ones you get. You might take five, but the first three are the ones that, that you get the credit for. And then you have to have parent permission, and the parents will be paying for that. The state will pay for the students who exceed, but then we have to pay for anybody who attempts it and does not exceed. So we will charge everybody, and the procedures will be if you exceed, we'll refund your money, but if you don't, we will use that to pay the fees. And again, it says right there that you can't earn any more than three units of credit.
This is best to keep people from just taking the test without.
Just taking a shot.
Just arbitrarily everybody taking it, yeah.
Yes. It's all new to us. We're working, we're working through it. This fall will be the first time we're, we're having that.
Any idea what the fees are?
Fifty dollars. It's set by the, we are following state guidelines, so right now, we'll charge them what they will charge us, which is fifty dollars.
Will it be like a once a year thing, like you can take them once, once a year for that?
Right now, it, in the future, it will be more than once a year. Right now, we're going to do it in the spring, so. And of course, test administration to transfer students. These are students who transfer into us, and this is how we give them, the, these are the ones who must take the E O C T, and tells them if you have to take it and what, when they have to take it, and that they have to have a 70.
On the 70, Cindy, up above, it's required as a 90? There was something.
It should, you, did they get theirs replaced? Okay. You did have a 90? That was in the area of subject area competency? We changed it to exceeds because that is what the State Board's rule says.
I just read it earlier then.
That's, yes, that's right. It was in there, but I got that amended. The rest of it is what you've been doing for military families, the right to appeal, the honor graduates, and the eligibility for extracurricular activities. So all of it remains the same except those couple of places and definitions. Do you have any more questions about that? I'll be glad if, if you read through it later and you have any, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. So I request that you lay this on the table for a vote next month, please.
Okay. Any more conversation? No? Okay. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Perkel, do you have the timeline and communication plan for redistricting?
I do.
Did you get your child moved?
And I did get my child moved, but we will not discuss that.
Okay.[534.12][534.12](laughter)
At this point, redistricting will be a better discussion.[540.12][540.12](laughter) If you can imagine.
Yes.[543.12][543.12](laughter)
Just kidding.
Are you ready for this again, Joey?
I think so.
How many students are we talking about in this redistricting?
Well, we don't, I don't, I do not have a definite number at this point. We really, basically, what we've done, all we have done up until this point is Brian and Tim have worked, just kind of getting a general idea.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll kind of go through that on this first slide, actually. You can see that we have said that primarily Dave's Creek, Midway Elementary, Settles Bridge, Shallow Point, Whitlow, and schools that are being, would be impacted, Big Creek, Brookwood, Cummings, Johns Creek, Mashburn, Sharon. But please keep in mind that this is just a general idea from just kind of taking a bird's eye view. There may be schools that are not on this list that will end up being impacted. There may be schools that are not on this list that will be, or schools that we have here that maybe, that we think that they are, and then once we actually sit down and start looking at it to come up with the first draft for folks to provide input, that may not be impacted that we thought. Does, does that make sense?
It does, because when I saw Whitlow and what we went through last time in filling that school, I just thought I didn't want to move anybody that was in Whitlow.
Right. So we kind of just gave a general idea of what, kind of what we think, and then once we get the first draft completed, then we'll put it out and we'll make sure that we, and we'll kind of start from there.
Okay.
But this kind of just gives you a, a general idea. And middle schools, primarily Otwell, Pony Grove, Riverwatch. And again, Ms. Crowe, that kind of goes back to what you just said, you know, we're, we're not sure about Otwell, but.
Right.
We'll see. And, and schools being impacted in middle school, other middle schools, South Forsyth Middle, Lakeside, and Little Mill Middle. There's no intent to adjust the 14, 15 high school lines, however. Lines all, that will all be reviewed and considered based on elementary and middle school changes. You know, when you start redistricting, you never say never, because once you start doing things, and you have to do this for that to happen, and then this for that to happen, so, but we, we really are not, we're hoping not to affect high school lines, and you know, if, if you think about all of our high schools, with the exception of Central, which just was impacted recently, but all of those high schools, other than Central, are at an overcapacity.
Right.
So when you start looking at, so you're really talking about two things. You know, you're, you're talking about high school students, and we've all had the discussion about what an impact that has on them, when you've got students who are in the band or on the football teams or basketball teams, chorus.
Student council.
All those kinds of things. It's just really huge, so, and if we're, if we're talking about, you know, an overcapacity to an overcapacity, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense. So anyway, we're, I said all that to kind of explain why we, we said that last statement.
Well, yeah, and you really have to put that statement in there, because if you, you move a pocket, there may be just a few kids in there that would be out of sync with everything else, it wouldn't make sense.
The timeline is, of course, we're presenting the timeline to you to, this afternoon, and next week, we would ask that you approve this plan at your regular board meeting on August the 15th. August the 23rd, we'll have a meeting with affected school principals. By that point in time, we hope to have a first draft that we could meet with those high school principals that would be effective, just, just as an informational kind of meeting, and have some discussion with them. We do realize, and it happened, this happened in the past when we've redistricted, that there may be a school that is impacted, that wasn't impacted at some, at point A that may be impacted at point B, so we'd bring that principal in at that point in time. So, you know, we, we do.
Your best guess.
Keeping everybody, you know, in the loop as we know it. September the 12th, the staff, they will present the draft one of the lines to the board. This is September the 13th through the 27th. We'll post that draft online and in the schools for feedback. And on October the 10th, we will present draft, after we've collected that feedback and looked at that, made any changes that, that we feel should be made based on the feedback, we'll present all that to you again on the 10th with a summary of the feedback. And then on October the 17th, we'll ask you to approve draft three of the lines, because at that point in time, it could be draft two with no changes, and we call it draft three, but it certainly could be changes that you all as a board ask us to make based on the input that we receive, that you receive, and the changes that we present on October the 10th. October the 21st through the, November the 1st, we'll post that draft online and in the schools for feedback. And on October the 22nd, we'll have our elementary school public forum at six o'clock, and on October the 24th, our secondary public forum at six o'clock. We, we did two for two really big reasons. One is that we felt if we could separate the issues, it would be less confusing, confusing for you all and for us, also just simply because we, the number of people, that we would, you know, we, we could kind of cut that in half, it would be more manageable, I think, with time, space, as well as managing the concerns that they might have, and hopefully better understanding those. And then on November the 14th, we present the final draft to the board for discussion, for you all to have discussion. And then on November the 21st, we would ask that you approve the 2014 district lines at your regular board meeting. The discussion of timeline for 14, 15 planning, I listed out of district requests, enrollment projections, and teacher allotments. I listed that to reiterate the importance of the November 21st approval of the district lines. It's really critical that we have the time, that we need to get all of that together, and that we get all of that data inputted into, in the system. We have the timeframe for out of district requests, we process those. Projection numbers can be calculated, numbers are rolled up for the next year in order for Dr. Norton to work on teacher allotments. So that's, takes a lot of time to get all that done. So I said all that and had that on here to stress the importance of the November 21st approval date. And then, of course, those are all the different ways that we plan to communicate all of the information and all of the stuff that we will have regarding district lines to our parents and community and schools.
When you go to do the online surveys, will it be fill in the blank, or it'll be like, can we see the survey before it goes out, I guess is what I'm.
We can, Jennifer, you.
Just. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I think that's good. It's, you know, we kind of glossed over it the very first slide, and it talks about why we're doing this. You know, there's been a lot of rumors around the pool and around communities, and we, we hear a lot about that, but, you know, talking about our facilities plan, and we're going to talk about that in a little bit, and we've got a lot of unknowns in this economy that we're in, and it's caused the growth patterns to be totally different. So, you know, we're not sure where this overcrowding is going to take place and where it already is taking place, and we ask the questions, why, and try to investigate that. So, you know, we find ourselves where we are, so we don't do this just for fun. This is not something we look forward to, but a necessity to, to most effectively spend the money that we have been given in taxes to, to, to do the best we can do.
Right.
So I think it's important to, to call that out and know why we're doing this.
Okay. I think I'm actually next, also. Is that correct? You are.
You are.
Okay. Well, I'll just move into that.
His two favorite things.
Yep, his two favorite things.
Two favorite things, exactly. So the timeline and the commu, communication plan for the school calendar, as we will be doing, getting that feedback at the same time that we're working on redistricting, but it's relatively the same general timeline, and Jennifer and I worked together, and Jennifer actually did the work, I shouldn't say we worked together, but she really looked at it to make sure that we were in sync with when we asked parents to provide, and local school councils providing feedback, so that we're not, we're kind of organized that. Jennifer organized that for us, so. But we'll present a draft, a, a calendar draft to local school councils on September the 13th, and then we'll collect and compile feedback from local school councils on September the 13th through the 27th, and then we'll present that draft to cabinet and principals through Friday notes and/or principal meetings. We'll present the draft to, to you, the board, October the 10th, and we'll post that draft on the web for feedback on October the 11th, and communicating that internally and externally. And we'll receive input until November the 1st, and then present a calendar to the board, to you, on November the 14th. And then the following week at your regular November meeting, ask you to approve a 14, 15 school calendar.
I would just, I, on the 10th, you'll give a, present the draft and probably explain some of the logic behind.
Yes, ma'am.
That, that draft, which is good. But again, I just ask if we could have it, you know, just a copy of it prior to that with the LSCs, because we will get questions, and.
Yes, ma'am.
Just as a parent.
I will, okay. Sure. That's no problem. Okay.
Charlie, the calendar will probably be very similar to what we've done probably in the past. I know that we tried several years ago to start later in the year because parents complained about the heat and stuff, but there, there's been discussion, and there are several districts that do the extended, like Cherokee County does. Is that ever going to be considered? Because it's been brought up when I begin to LSC meetings. I know this, it's better for teachers to do that.
We, we have, we haven't, we have not really put that out the last few years. We did, we did do a survey on that specific calendar a few years back.
Several years ago, we have like choices, like draft one, two, and three, and one of them was kind of that.
We did, and, and of course, and, of course, when we have, when we have received feedback on the, on the calendar, even last year and the year before, and the, the feedback has been regarding that primarily that you have staff members who, staff want the Cherokee calendar.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm talking about majority, majority. Now, there, there are some parents who do like it. I'm not saying that we, we do not have any parents, but, and looking at the feedback in the years past, it, it ended up being staff members liked the Cherokee calendar, or a calendar, the balanced calendar, liked a Cherokee calendar, whereas most parents would prefer a calendar not like that.
And they don't really understand the benefits. And I, I know the parents in Cherokee love it. The ones I've talked to just think it's wonderful, so I just think it's an understanding of the benefits of it.
Yeah.
But, I don't know.
Another question, Joey.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, Dr. Perkel. A couple of years back, when we did the calendar, again, each of the budget is always a question, and at that time, we did the hope that we could restore our furlough days and have the days back. And at the time, I just, I struggled with that concept, because I thought, you know, we know we're not getting the money, why do we bother? This year, we didn't, and then we ran the opposite pickle. We were debating about putting the days back, but we, a large reason we really couldn't go that way was because we already had the calendar approved. So I see pros and cons with each. So do you have any idea what idea you're going in with this year, to hope or not, or?
Well, no, we have, I mean, we really haven't, and I say we, I know that Dr. Evans and myself, we have not really talked about that, but you're right, we did, we were optimistic one year and did, and then had to go back and take them back out. So, you know, it's just, I mean, do we want to, do we want to start with a 180?
Yes. I do.
No, I have mixed feelings. I think it'd be great to have more educational days.
I can do.
But I think we're going to get as much pushback from the parents who don't want us to squeeze in more days, right or wrong, which is, I mean, it'd be nice to have more educational days, but they want that time off, too, so.
Well, but school is school.
That's right.
It's supposed to be 180 days.
There are other systems that are back.
If we can afford it, I mean, that's the thing.
We can, we can start with the, I mean, again, just.
I don't, yeah.
We can start with the 180, and if we have to take them out, we can start with them out, and we have to, add them in. I mean, you know, you're going to get, I mean, some people have the opinion, well, it'd be better to, to add them in, be better to start with them in, and then take them out. I mean.
So what are you planning on doing?
Yes.
I do not know.
You haven't gotten there far yet?
We will work toward giving you a calendar that calculates 180 student days.
Thank you.
I think that's a good idea. I think as a parent, I would rather them be taken out than added later.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
Good luck with that. Okay.
You're, you're basically, you're telling us right now that you, you hope that we can support that if we get down to that line, that there's a commitment toward doing that, so that kind of sends us a message of what we can work toward.
Well, other counties around us have restored 180.
Sure.
Not everybody, but several have, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank yous.
Okay, next, we have the local facilities plan update with Jennifer Cratchelo and Tim Amerson, not Bill McKnight. He, Bill's on my thing, but it's Tim, huh?
Okay, I'm going to start off, and then Tim will jump in and do the meat in the middle.
Okay.
And then I'll wrap up then. Okay, so we, based on our committee work in June, we had to go back and revise our timeline for the facilities plan, and so this was on your original slide that we went through earlier in the year. And then what we modified was that this June, we did get together a district committee, and it had representatives from all of our departments that were impacted with the facilities plan, and then tonight, we're presenting the, the recommendations to you from the minute. And then in September, you will come back as Board of Education and discuss the committee notes, and then we will have our next meeting on October 7th. And then from there, we'll come back to you on October 10th and give you the final recommendations for the facilities plan. You will discuss them on the 14th, and then it's not till the 21st until you approve the facilities plan. And then in December, the outside survey team will review the facilities plan and deliver the final plan to the DOE. And then after that, we hope for approval in the spring, and we'll be able to implement it next July.
Who is on the outside survey team?
The committee selected by local communities, so be it Dawson, Lumpkin County, Cherokee County, people that report facilities or school administration would be invited.
So this means it goes to the state for approval, and then it has to be approved by the legislators? So the State Board has to approve it, and then?
Just the State Board of Education approves the plan.
And then the legislators approve the bonds?
When we do a funding application to separate islands.
So when is that going to happen? Would that happen right in 2014 or '15?
Do you want to speak to this, Dr. Evans, about, because we, we talked about this in agenda planning a little bit, and we were all, I think, a little confused about it. It's two totally separate things.
Yeah, there, there's a couple of things here. The first part of this, this facilities plan will drive the amount of funding that the state will provide for building our facilities. So, and, and how it will be developed will be in such a way that will hopefully generate as, or maximize the amount of money that we will get from the state. The good thing about this particular timeline, it does give you as a Board of Education about six weeks in terms of looking at it from the time that you find out what's in it to the time that you vote for. This is going to generate somewhere around, and I'm going to use round figures, about $50 million in terms of revenue. And we know that's not everything that we're going to do over the next several years in terms of facilities. As we look toward the tentative, uh, November 2014 bond referendum date, we are thinking that bond referendum may be 150 to 175 million dollars. But this is going to generate hopefully about $50 million worth of state money on top of that by which to do that. As far as the timeline for this, it starts clicking. Once we get this approved by the State Board of Education, we can then make application for those projects that are listed there. Once those projects are, are listed and approved by this, and we make application to the state and it's approved, then they would go into the future bond sales. For example, I, I think would be maybe easy to look at now is the elementary school on McFarland Road. That was in the old facilities plan. We've been, we earned money from the state to get that, but we don't actually get that money until we make that application and the bonds are sold, and then it comes back to us that way and we start construction. So the bottom line is, we could actually be in line for our first application for, for what money's generated from this plan about this time next year, I believe, Tim. So that was a long answer to your question, but that's in essence how it goes. But do keep in mind that there, there's two parts of this. This is just going to generate and maximize the amount of money that we're going to earn from the state, of which will probably be about the largest amount of money that we've ever earned in an application, Tim, is that true?
Well, as far as what we have with accumulated over the last several years.
Right.
That is.
On top of that.
So, so anyway, so that's how that effect, now, once again, in Jennifer's timeline here, I don't want to get ahead of you, so I'll be quiet, how about that?
Thank you. Okay, you ready to go over in a minute? Okay, these were things that as a Board of Education, you asked us to look at. So we divided up and went elementary, middle, and high school. At the elementary level, our committee recommends that we maintain the current size of the schools for elementary, which is 1,500. And then we also recommend that we build one new elementary school that would relay, relieve Midway, Vicory, and Shallow Point. And then we also discussed at your request, the future plan for Midway Elementary School, and the committee recommends that we keep it at this time as a traditional school because there's no place to accommodate these 700 students that are currently attending the school. If we were to move them to the new elementary school with those other students from the other schools, you'd basically be opening up that school at or over capacity. But the committee does recognize that there may be other options for this facility in the future, but the FTE demands that, the, the FTE demands at this time pretty much eliminate that in the near future.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Plus, we have, we also know, based on the development, we have another five hundred more coming in the Midway area alone that are coming, so, yeah, good call.
For middle school, our committee recommends that we increase the design capacity of the school from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred. And the reason for this is that if we, um, increase it to fifteen hundred, we don't have to expand the core capacity, the cafeteria, the media centers. And then also too, in the facilities plan, we recommend one new middle school, number ten, and then additions to two exist- existing buildings. And Mr. Amerson will get into more details on that. And then at the high school level, our committee recommend that we increase the design capacity of our high schools from twenty-one hundred to twenty-five hundred. And the main reason for that is it goes back to the core capacity, because that's what those buildings were built to accommodate. And we have schools like Lambert and West that are relatively new high schools, that if we were to go larger than the twenty-five hundred, we would have to invest a great deal of money into those schools in addition to the older high schools to have to expand them. In the facilities plan, we also recommend to build one new high school, um, that would relieve South and West, and then to do additions to two existing high school buildings, which would be Lambert and South, I mean Lambert and North, sorry. And then we also, at your request, discussed the future plan for North High and North Middle School. And we had a lot of discussion on this. We recommend to continue developing, to, to continue operating the schools currently as they are as separate. And the reason behind that is because if we combine those into one school, that would be a huge thirty-two hundred school, which creates a lot of issues as far as student control and student safety and student access. So, that would go beyond the twenty-five hundred level that we recommended. And then also too, a concern was about the access to the upper coursework that the students would have and the CTAE offerings. And then too, if we were to take over North Middle School, we would have to go in and we would have to renovate that school to have it be applicable for a high school. Plus, you're looking at a whole school the size of North Middle that we would have to purchase land for and to build a new school to relieve that.
What about the future traffic on that whole area when you've got three schools feeding into, that's gonna be huge.
We do have that in the plan. Mr. Amerson's worked on that, about rewriting the traffic in that area to, to eliminate that problem. So, from our committee, you'll see in red too, that we have some things that we're actually working on right now that we'll discuss in October. And that includes the middle school career pathway focus, so they'll align with their feeder high schools. Also, to do some work with the high schools on their CTAE and career academy plans. We also, um, are doing some work on discussing an aggressive autism center. And then too, our technology department is going to be bringing back some information about the future of computer labs, and then also about, um, the number of computers that we have in middle school and high school classrooms. So, those are the recommendations from the ki- from the committee for you to discuss in upcoming months, and then Mr. Amerson will do the next part.
Okay. Uh, the first slide you're looking at here, this is the, uh, previous enrollment trend. This was a page I showed you at the earlier report. And I show you on that top line that we were averaging sixteen hundred and thirty-eight students per year. And those students are added into school years two thousand and twelve through two thousand and seventeen, uh, year after year. And the distribution of the students is shown as elementary, middle, and high school down there in the bottom right-hand corner of your slide. Shows we'd have about twenty-two thousand two hundred in elementary, ten thousand seven hundred eighty-nine in middle, and twelve thousand thirty-four at high school. We've now got our new update. Unfortunately, our average dropped from sixteen thirty-eight to sixteen twelve. Uh, we did have that one year around two thousand and ten where we had such small growth that really shows up as the impact as this average carries forth a little further, even though last year's numbers did come up a bit. Uh, and this slide will also carry us out through two thousand and eighteen. And you can see we're now up to forty-six thousand five hundred ninety-nine students that we'd expect here, uh, by the graduating class of two thousand and eighteen. The significant jump is gonna be that for the, uh, high school. As you saw, they jumped from about mid eleven thousands to twelve thousand eight hundred. So, that is a big jump just over one year for those, uh, that grade levels.
Can I ask a question before you go on with this? And you have spent some time on, with me on this, so I do appreciate that. These, when we're doing this facilities plan, they, they're taking the average over these number of years, and, you know, it's, which is a good thing, because you might have peaks and, and lows, and you can't just build or not build after just one year of an influx. We, we slowed down and we're picking back up again, and it seems right now that this year and next year, we're probably gonna be increasing perhaps at a higher rate.
Yes.
But the way things work, we can't really take that. And we have to use this old, I'll call it the old average of reality. We can't really look ahead. Even though we're doing a long-term plan, it's old.
This is the snapshot of where we get started for building the plan. We will actually get these, as you saw, I had last year's page to this year's page. We get these updates every year. And as we do that, you'll also see that reflected in the entitlement page, which I share with you, which shows you how much need we have compared to everybody in the state of Georgia, and what our percentage of that need comparison is. We earn what's called entitlement. This year, we earned about five point two million dollars in entitlement from the state of Georgia. It's added to the fifty-four million dollars we've accrued over the last several years, uh, to give us money to draw on for future projects. Also, as our attendance increases, you'll have this page updated, so in two thousand and nineteen, you'll see we'll go from forty-six thousand five ninety-nine to say forty-seven thousand, uh, well, I'm sorry, about forty-eight thousand if we jump at the same rate. So, as we look at that, so then we'll have those students to look ahead, and as we see schools that are just on the crux of needing a school, we'll be able to build those students into our needs, curriculum and space needs plan, to show those schools being needed further down the line.
But in the preparation of doing this five-year facility plan, the reality is we're kinda stuck using, by, we're required to use this data that's old.
This is show, this is show is that we need enough classroom space to handle forty-six thousand five hundred ninety-nine students by the year two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. And more specifically, twenty-two thousand elementary, eleven thousand, uh, middle, and twelve thousand eight hundred high school. So, we have to look at that and say, here's our current inventory of high school classrooms. This is how many more classrooms we'll need to occupy those students if the average holds true in two thousand and eighteen. And then that's how the state identifies how many classrooms they'll help us build at the, at the new high schools or new high school additions, for instance.
I get the logic, but I think you hear my frustration coming through, that we're just, we are the third fastest growing system in the nation, and we're just, we're not the norm.
But we do, like I said, we do get the updates. We do have opportunities when we see a big number jump to go back there and revisit the, the plan and the organization. And typically, as we've grown fast for the last decade, we've been doing these plans every three years versus every five years. I mean, we're, we're doing this one in year four.
We're doing one early, right.
Typically, we've been doing as quick as getting one done.
Right, and starting another.
Build, build three or four schools, do a new plan. That shows what needs we satisfy, but yet what needs we see coming forth.
So, there is a big potential, and I know what Kristen's saying too, that the growth that is starting to come back now could actually exceed what you've got down here. But we'll, we'll adjust as we go along.
Yeah, but by state rules, we can only look out to two thousand and seventeen, eighteen at their number for what they will contribute. We can create what's called a local FTE projection. To some degree, we do that with a lot of the, uh, like, programs that we may add into a school above what the state's, uh, require- requirement is. We have a little flexibility. And I touch on that as we get more into some of the specific projects and show you how that works.
Okay, thank you.
The proposed organization for elementary schools, well, we've kinda made that one easy for the twenty-two thousand three hundred seventy-six students we plan to have. Most of those students, as we fill up all the schools from Vic Creek down to Whitlow, those basically show them at capacity plus or minus classroom. You'll see some of those little minus ones and twos, which builds needs for us, but we're not gonna necessarily say build those classrooms at Vic Creek, add two more classrooms. But, uh, we do work, like I said, to distribute as close to that capacity number, uh, for all the schools down to Whitlow.
So, the new elementary school will take from Midway, Shiloh, and Vicory?
Yes.
Okay.
It's primary, primary target areas. So, as we work through the list, we see that we have about eleven hundred twenty-five, which should give us a seventy-one, uh, classroom, uh, elementary school. That the state will help fund. As you see, there's a state IU's earned is seventy-one, and, uh, therefore, they'll help with funding on that. We do have about three hundred and twenty-six state, uh, estimated students. As you can see, we're starting to build a need into another west elementary school. Right now, I've got them, uh, in Pools Mill. Again, that's one of the things we'll watch, because we know is Pools Mill and that west corridor may grow. We also have development up there in the Reading area, which may mean we jump further up in the north area if that northern district between Matt and Silver City explodes.
So, the, the growth is really coming, curving up that way?
And that's what we've been seeing. It's building the south area, it's coming up the, uh, west corridors of Post Road, Bethabuse areas along that side.
Okay.
Now, it may continue up that way, or it may start coming back across from Silver City, three sixty-nine from Highway four hundred back across that way also. So, we'll see how the, the development patterns turn out.
We're watching.
And in three or four years, there may be another hot pocket that we need to move all those students to another school we hadn't begun to thought, think about. Like I said, this one's kinda easy, because we know that this is the, uh, project summary for elementary fourteen. This is the application y'all will be reviewing next Thursday. We're waiting for the final draft to be approved from Atlanta and returned to us. We'll build seventy-one units. We'll actually have seventy-two instructional units in the building, uh, so one of we get to pay for. But basically, what this does is this state will fund nine point five million dollars of the project. Our, uh, local required funds, based on, uh, percentage, is like, as you can see, is about sixteen point two-three percent. And that's what we have to guarantee, that we can pitch in to build an eleven million dollar elementary school. As we know, it's gonna be a little over eleven million dollars, but, uh, based on the state formulas, this is how everything comes up to be. But the, uh, funding formula for, uh, state funding has gone from seventy dollars to eighty dollars a square foot for elementaries over this last year, so we are getting a little bit more realistic, uh, participation on that part. So, that's, uh, it for the elementary schools.
Tim, are we gonna, um, investor may address to you. I know we, we have the prototype schools that we've used, elementary and the middle and the high school, that we've talked about. That's how we save money. Is there gonna be any deviation from that to look at another plan?
We have talked about looking at some other plans at those schools. And again, you know, the Sony Elementary was first the, uh, what I call the Gwinnett Box Plan that we started working with this architect, which Kelly Mill finally evolved into. Uh, we think it's a good working plan. We know there's some things. Uh, one of the things we know that comes back from Whitlow, Brookwood, Kelly Mill is cafeteria is too far away from the K-two areas. Could we look at moving that area over, and then how would we balance out the rooms?
And more toilets?
I've heard that question too.
Teachers don't like standing outside the bathrooms while the kids are.
We, we have opened up discussion about, uh, talking with some other architects and previewing some of their plans that they have done with other school systems, or reviewing our, uh, school program, see what ideas they may have.
Okay, good.
So, we may change architects. We may just take the Kelly Mill plan and shake it up and, and, and rework it from there.
Okay.
So, we're still kind of in that point of decision. I haven't really gotten that deep into it.
Cause we really haven't used that two-story plan much at all, besides Sharon and Hall Creek.
Well, you know, we did the first version with the Sharon, uh, Shiloh Point, Johns Creek is the two-story with open courtyards. And then we kinda collapsed that plan, which create more of an efficient building by not having that big open courtyard, all the brick and windows in the courtyard that we have to build. Uh, so Hall Creek was the first one of that two-story version, as we kind of, uh, collapsed it down and kinda worked with the plan that was similar to what we were, uh, working with, with the middle schools. And even with the middle schools, we talked about possibly in the future folding those wings back into each other, making the footprint more square and not quite as long. But we know for the monitoring point, that long building, kinda, kinda strange, but you can monitor it very well.
Well, things have changed. Technologies changed. That could affect it, and school safety. We look at things a little different over the last few years, so. Different eyes.
And even as we think outside the box, as we discussed with the two-story buildings, once we put the footprint in for stairwells, footprint for elevator, build an elevator, two stories to three stories, those things are still out there as a possibility, that maybe we go up and continue to use a smaller footprint for the building.
Okay.
And again, middle school's so tricky, because you really wanna keep your sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade.
Right, separately.
Population separate. So, we have to look how that goes together in the big picture.
Okay.
All right, now moving on into middle schools. As Jennifer alluded, we, uh, have looked at it. We've, uh, determined that, uh, that fourteen hundred, fourteen fifty number is a very good number to kind of work towards for bringing in the team programs and providing the extra curri- the other curricular programs, connection programs for the school. So, uh, we are looking at moving our buildings up to roughly about eighty-six instructional units from sixty-four, as we're building them now. Take our capacities from about ten fifty up to about fourteen hundred as we go. Uh, we are recommending for the explanation justification page, that we will increase our middle school enrollment from twelve hundred capacity maximum to fifteen hundred. Uh, some of the driving factors, River Watch and those newer versions of the schools have a core capacity of fourteen hundred and fifty kids. So, we can work towards that number.
It almost, with those three schools, saves you the building of one more middle school, if I had to.
So, as, uh, we discussed, we'd build one new middle school, which would be the James Road Middle School, uh, number ten. And then, of course, the focus would be on River Watch in South to increase their school capacity. Part of our thought pattern is, there's really not a good location to build another middle school in that district. Uh, if we build one, I'm afraid it could kinda go the path of what we saw with Brookwood and Johns Creek, where after we got it open, actually see some of the enrollments start to come backwards. Uh, as this, as we're seeing with the elementary schools in those areas, as they're maturing and promoting into middle school, and then we'll be promoting into high school by the time we open this. So, we think that the additions of those two schools should take care of a lot of the, uh, overpopulation we're seeing now and be manageable for those two schools in that, in that section of the county.
Oh, Kathy sure has done an excellent job with River Watch, being so crowded.
You got other ideas on middle schools?
Where did you say the ten was?
Ten is down there. It's Union Hill, McFarland Road. It's very close to elementary fourteen.
Okay.
In that same little area of the county. All right, and then the high school, what we're looking at doing is go ahead recommending to build a high school number seven. This one will also probably be in the southwest area to relieve South and West High Schools. And then focus our attention to put the addition at Lambert and also up at, uh, North Forsyth High School. Key component with North Forsyth High Schools, we talked previously, was working on a new cafeteria, kitchen, a food service area that would handle the current population as well as a larger population.
Okay.
Make it more, uh, in keeping with what we've done at Lambert and West High School for their, uh, food court, food service areas.
Where did the twenty-five hundred number come from?
Uh, the primary, uh, when we started with the West Forsyth High School, we said, let's plan a little addition in there. So, we kind of had an arbitrary number from our two thousand. We said, take it up to twenty-five hundred. So, Lambert and West actually have their capacity peaks out at twenty-four seventy-five. North peaks out at about twenty-four hundred, unless we really find some more ways to, uh, expand their media center. As we expand media center, we have to start stealing classrooms, then we have to start building classrooms elsewhere. So, twenty-four hundred is kind of my fixed number for North Forsyth High School. I'd have to remember exactly where I was with Central.
I feel like it's a terrible number, just because, Todd, can you tell us what, what the six A and the five A, the school size are?
We won't give reclassification to change that.
But I mean, isn't that right about where he puts you in six A at the bottom, so you have to compete with all the four thousand capacity schools and everything we do? So, it puts us at the bottom of the pile, which I don't know that. So it puts us at the bottom of the pile, which I don't know that now there's anything we can do about that, but I just, um, I don't know.
Except compete.
Well, I know if you're going to compete with the big boys, then you ought to be a big boy is, is what I'm saying in, in everything. I just feel like that, that we, it's, all of our schools are at a disadvantage the way they've done the reclassification and stuff. But, you know, we can't build five new high schools and make them all, you know, fifteen hundred. But I, I didn't know where that twenty-five hundred came from.
Most of the models of reclassification will affect class size and small ones anyway. I doubt they may vary with the.
It'll stay about the same.
Do you mind, survey information kind of give us a preference as far as that number, Jennifer?
No, the survey information in, it was all over the place, honestly, for that number. It was very evident for elementary, middle schools. They wanted that small.
Right.
But it was almost like it depended on their personal preference, almost similar to what we do with the calendar that for the high school level, it was pretty much mediumed. It mediumed out in the middle, so.
So they didn't want to come back to the two thousand, which is what we used for a long time.
And another thing I forgot to mention that, um, Mr. McKnight has talked about too in our committee meetings is that the, one of the reasons why the committee recommended that size was it wasn't just the core capacity we looked at with the cost. We also looked at the athletic facilities. That if we were to up the size of those high schools, then we would really have to sink a lot of money into the cores and then to the athletic facilities. And we had a lot of discussion about too, how do you transition with those, with the high schools while you already have kids in those buildings? Because you can't do that work in the summer. It would be, you'd have to expand the, you know, stadiums while you'd be in the middle of doing that.
But I don't think North Stadium is big enough to host a playoff game right now, is it?
No, it is not.
It is not. And their gym is ten feet shorter than everybody they compete against in basketball, isn't it? Todd, isn't it ten feet shorter than what's, what's regular, what's regular? It is.
Well, that is something that we can talk about whenever we get into the bond referendum because that's not as part of the facilities plan that we'll earn the money for.
Right.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, and, and if we're going to compete with the big boys, we need to, we need to get the stuff to compete with them is what I think. Even if we don't have the students, so I think we need to think about that for whoever, whoever's thinking about that.
Well, and that's part of the discussion we, we built in for your timeline, plenty of discussions you can have about the facilities plan. Because ultimately it is up to you to approve it because of the, the financial considerations that would go in, into that.
Okay.
Good.
There's a lot of factors that go into all these different steps. And with the survey, it was worthwhile to go through the process, but I don't think most parents could answer that accurately. If you asked a parent, do I want Lambert or West or South expanded? They're going to say, yeah, because it's crowded and there's trailers. But in the same question we said, well, do you want us to increase the, the maximum size of the school? No. Well, we have to increase the size because the trailers are there. So if we don't increase the size, we take away the trailers, we don't add on. So you get the same parent answering the same questions, answering opposite. So it doesn't make sense. So the survey is useful, but it doesn't, it gives conflicting information. So.
And like you say, it's really a personal preference. I mean, it's, they don't consider everything, I'm sure. Okay, continue on.
Well, so anyway, we have kind of derived a number based on the current facilities. And just look back through my notes, that covers most all the existing high schools. Uh, I think South has capacity go up towards about twenty-six hundred. Uh, South, uh, Central was about twenty-five forty, so we're riding that twenty-five hundred number. And of course, the big thing is we've also talked about with selecting that size, is that for total school population management? And, and not getting so big, you lose track of the kids and what they do, uh, outside of your purview.
Mr. Emerson, on the new high school, why go with the lower number of twenty-seven, seventy-five? Why not the new maximum?
Uh, the idea would be is to give us a little bit more flexibility that we'd build this school much like we did for Lambert and West with the idea that we would be able to expand it later. Hate to invest too much money and make too big of a school down at the high school number seven. And then see that our real population is up post road by West High School. And that those classrooms would be better added on to West High School that all concentrated on the southwest end.
But aren't we already saying we're going to add on to West in the same process though?
Not, not at this time.
Lambert, oh.
And then like I said, this addresses just the state's FTE of, uh, twelve thousand eight hundred students that we were talking about and building towards that number.
Okay, okay. I get it now.
I do have, I do have a little local FTE because I, I did need to add some additional classrooms for Lambert North. So you see a little one hundred and twenty and number one hundred for local FTE. Those local classrooms will build in addition to the fifteen to seventeen classrooms that the state will participate with. So the state will build fifteen classrooms for us at Lambert and we'll build six for a total of twenty-one new classrooms at Lambert. Similar for, for North. And it's just a question of what part, part of the funding package that they, they can help us with based on our, uh, projected FTE.
How many trailers does South have right, right now?
South has actually eighteen trailers. We started twelve this year.
I know the future high school where we leave them, but it seems like South's getting left out of the picture here a little bit.
Yeah. But we'll be able to relieve South and West High School with this new high school. And again, if the population demands are still growing faster in the south area, then we fall back to south and put in addition. And again, we'll be earning more, uh, estimated FTE over the years. We will be earning more entitlement money. So we'll be able to go back and, and address that with the plan once we build high school number seven and expand Lambert and North.
Would, would, would that have to be in the, in the future plan, the next future plan?
Doesn't have to wait before five years. Like I said, this, these are updates we would be able to make into our plan. We could do administrative update through the state. So in year two or three, if, if we're ready to respond that quick with a decision, I don't know if we know what the full impact of high school number seven would have before we build it. But we may have better ideas. We talked about with the whole change of the developments where now that things are starting back up again, where's the focus at?
So the bond, um, and I'm sure it's here, but I'm just trying to recap it would, would include this elementary, the middle, the new middle, new, new elementary, new middle, a new high school, plus the renovations to Lambert and to, uh, North. Plus technology.
Well, River Watch and South.
Okay, South Middle. So if there's any leeway to, in case this happens, the scenario would add more money to in case these things happen?
Yeah, that, that's part of the, the bond work that we'll be doing is that we'll be looking at all the schools because Mr. Emerson's collected feedback from every single school about their needs above and beyond the facilities plan. So that's what we'll be bringing back to you in the spring that you'll be spending a couple of months working on. So we could look at South.
Cause I, I remember from the preliminary data, South was like the number one need at this very time. So all of a sudden to see it not on the list, so to speak, seems a little off.
Yeah, and really it's going to go back to how South was whenever we built Lambert. You'll see a large number of trailers there and at West. So we'll have to have that need there before we populate.
Well, it's not just the trailers of South. They have other needs from their.
Well, their, their middle school that was converted. And that's one bad thing about doing that because the halls are just not as big. The rooms, you know, it's just bigger people.
At North, you go there, half the kids switch classrooms going outside because they can't get down the corridors.
Yeah, that's things that we'll be looking at for the bond referendum.
Yeah, especially as we talked about with Dorf, one of the things is to create a new central circulation area with that cafeteria.
So everybody's got outside, right.
What our, uh, preliminary design incorporates is kind of filling all that in behind the auditorium, that whole parking lot.
Safer, I'm sure than having everybody outside.
Keeps people who traverse from the two-story addition back across to the main entrance through that parking lot. That's correct. Get them inside and have better circulation that way. And then reutilize the space where the cafeteria kitchen was before, for, uh, CTAE programs. Again, we'll have that list developed in October. So we'll be, be able to expand. Uh, what you see coming up in our tabulation priorities as we see those modifications. We have, uh, you know, clarified some other things, uh, work closely with Jill to identify the twenty-first learning center, media centers. Those don't actually earn us an instruction unit. Therefore, we really don't earn anything from state. Most of our renovation modifications very small there. So you won't necessarily see that in the plan as a line item, but those are things we'll be able to work towards, uh.
I think that's something that's really changed is what the media center is and, and what it was. And I, is the state updated with that? Like, have they come along with that?
They, they've worked with it. In fact, you know, some of these, uh, they set up demonstration labs at the Twenty-First Century Labs at the Board of Education. So they're there for everybody to view. Uh, really hasn't come out of, to change the physical square foot requirement, which is my part. They give me, you have fifteen hundred to fifteen hundred seventy students. You need two thousand twenty-three square feet.
So that's still the same that it's been.
Still a fixed chart, uh, in their plan. The only thing we did get relief on was some of the electronic media is we now lo- no longer have the SACS requirement for having to put so many linear feet of bookshelf in per student.
Well, that's good. I mean, it is.
So that, that used to be a, that used to be a hard calculation as well. And that, that one was actually from SACS that has now disappeared as electronic media came into play.
That's good.
So we don't, we don't have to build as many bookshelves. We can put more computers or interactive workspaces, collaborative workspaces for the students in the media center, which again, as she said, changes the whole use of that media center space. All right, you think further with the high school side?
We'll think of something later.
Okay. Got time. Again, the explanation justification page, this is where we're going to, uh, change the middle from nine hundred FTE minimum up to fifteen hundred, which previously twelve hundred. And we're going to move the high school from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. Again, the, the, being a max number, when we submit a plan to the state, if we submitted a plan saying, we want you to help build us enough classrooms to house a population of twenty-seven hundred, they say, no, we stop at twenty-five hundred. If you want to build more classrooms to go to twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred, that is strictly on your dime. We're not participating beyond the number of units to meet that number.
And I, I would say you have to go to this maximum, but we would hope that our schools are not this big.
Yeah. You know, and for instance, we have, you know, twenty-five hundred students at the high schools and we've managed to admit them at high schools. So it's not, that's sort of fixed. We can't have those students there. It's just part of the formula to fund the actual bricks and mortar classrooms that they will cut.
Kind of elementaries are kind of all over the board in their, and their capacities.
We started six hundred twenty-five from midway up to fourteen hundred for Sony.
So that doesn't mean we're going to increase them all that. Just some that are already close to that. So where the middles and the high school are a little bit more, they're closer.
Yeah. And we've all, always tried to keep more of that parity issue, I think, with middle and high schools, primarily with their programs to build towards that same size middle school. We've been fortunate to always be building, uh, you know, towards the sixty-four units. The first three middle schools we built, we actually had twelve classrooms less than what they have now. Then when we started with the Otwell River Watch, uh, design, we took those up twelve classrooms. We went back to North, South and Vicar Creek and added twelve classrooms to bring them up to that number. Keeping them a little bit more, like I said, within parity of each other.
Does help.
Their service areas. And again, uh, organization that will have kindergarten through fifth grade or those with pre-K through fifth grade, sixth through eighth, ninth through twelfth. We have no other, uh, grade level mixes. It's, it's open for changing if y'all decide that we need a K-twelve school someplace special, but that's what we're working under. Now we'll go through the tabulation priorities. Oops, let me do that. This is where we identify the school and what we see the need is by priority. As you see, the first one I have on there is elementary fourteen. Actually, by the time you see this book printed, uh, for final copy, elementary fourteen will roll off that list because, uh, as I said, of next week, we'll have an application into the state. Once the state considers it funded, they're going to pretend there's seventy-one classrooms sitting on Martin Drive. Um, so therefore we don't get to say we need seventy-one classrooms for elementary fourteen. They're going to say, we've given it to you. Take it off your list. But for, uh, discussion points, I put it at the top of our list. We know we're doing that. That's our first need as of today. Uh, as I said, it's going to earn us about nine point five million dollars. Our, uh, local, uh, contribution is eighteen, uh, one point eight million dollars. The next project I show on there is middle school number ten. Uh, state funding formula for eighty-six classrooms will earn us about fourteen million, six hundred thousand dollars, uh, which will have, uh, local contribution of two point eight, uh, million dollars. I've gone into the Lambert High School and North Forsyth High School additions next. I figure those are projects we could come out of the ground much quicker with, uh, to start those projects at those schools. Uh, the next goal would be, uh, River Watch, which we know there's a strong need there for relief of building out the River Watch Middle School. And then sandwiched into future high school. The reason I moved the high school down there is I know by the time we have the funds to go procure par- property, go through all our due diligence, get a school construction site for high school number seven, will give us some time to get these other projects started the year before. Same time we're working on procuring a high school site and then be able to come back and start the high school project the year after that. That's kind of my thought process of how I've got them arranged on here. And then last but not least was finishing up with the South Middle School addition. We do have room for as many items as we can, uh, list under tabulation priorities. I've got a list from HVAC for eighteen hundred and thirty HVAC mechanical units that he would like to see replaced. So I'm trying to weed through that list to figure out which ones are high priority, how far up the party, depending on the age of school, those type of things. We have some, uh, safety, security, a lot of hardware issues that we've identified, uh, that fall within our life, life cycle. So we're going to be looking at those projects as well as the remaining stuff with the roofs and those type of projects, uh, for modification.
On the South Middle Edition, um, we've looked at that one over the years as far as, I mean, is that truly just additional classrooms? Or we'll look at, we've had, you know, driving and parking issues over there at this time. Like I was, I spoke with the principal today. We were just dreading if the rain stopped the walkers today. So is that, put anything in there to help possibly reroute or do some work?
No, uh, again, as the, the state formula you see here, they're going to provide, uh, nine hundred eighty-one thousand dollars for us to build twenty classrooms. And again, they'll build the classrooms. As we know, we're going to put in a lot more into that construction project above the one point something million dollars that the state has an average of eighty dollars a square foot. We know we, we will put a lot more into that. You know, we do have some, uh, CTAE areas that we're going to develop above being a standard classroom and those type of things.
Maybe more of infrastructure though and the exterior.
Infrastructure will again come out of the local funding. So as we look at that with the bonds in, we know we have this many classrooms, this many square feet for the middle school. We know we'll need the additional parking, initial driveways and those, those type of things we can address as we go.
Good, thank you.
Question I have is around the high school seven. Would we build the core for twenty-five hundred and just the classrooms for the two thousand plus?
Right now, that would be our ideas to build it much like we did with the program for Lambert and West. Build a core for twenty-five hundred or thereabouts. And then build enough classrooms for two thousand seventy-five students, about a hundred and four classrooms.
Okay.
Hundred and seven classrooms.
Okay.
And then design it with the area that we could expand and, and add on to that building.
So it'd just be the classroom addition then when needed?
Yeah, you know, as history goes, I remember with us building Vicar Creek Elementary School before that thing even had the frame up. There was already a ten, uh, ten classroom addition planned for it. That was added on to construction contract. So, you know, we've done things like that before in the past too, to start a school and go, these thirty-eight classrooms are going to be enough. We need another ten right now. So.
And can you speak to the sunsetting of capital outlay for fast growth? How they've moved that money now into regular growth? How is that going?
Uh, um, this happened. The fifty-four million dollars that I talked about accumulated, that is from some of our regular entitlement as everybody earns, as well as what was our previous exceptional growth formula. That money was rolled into all into that fifty-four million dollars of accumulated, accumulated entitlement. So that really the titles of regular and exceptional growth have kind of rolled off their, uh, discussion. It's now just regular growth unless you qualify for, uh, low wealth or advanced funding.
And has that hurt us in any way? Or have we got the same amount of money?
No, we're definitely earning less than what we're earning. The last project, uh, last entitlement that we earned exceptional growth, I think we were earning about, uh, ten to eleven million dollars, just in exceptional growth.
Hmm, okay. And we've lost that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So now we dropped that.
I just wanted, I was just curious what the outcome of that. I just wanted, I was just curious, what the outcome of that changed?
So that, that's the change with that, as we discussed earlier. Um, and again, at the same time that happened, we opened five schools, so we satisfied five brand-new schools worth the needs in our plan. That was in our old plan.
Okay.
So we, we didn't have as much need compared to everybody else in the state of Georgia after we opened those five schools and, uh, lost the exceptional growth.
I wouldn't worry if we quit growing, but we continue to grow.
There we go. All right, and we'll get down to the bottom line on that. Uh, as I said, we, uh, earned five point two million dollars this summer in regular funding. If they fund it at the hundred percent level, uh, that's where the state will sit down in the spring and determine, we're funding it a hundred percent, eighty percent, sixty percent, forty percent, or zero. We do anticipate, uh, from all the, uh, work from downtown, that they are expecting things to be funded at a hundred percent, last time we talked to them. So we hope to see that five point two million dollars in the bank account. And again, we had about, uh, fifty-four million dollars from previous regular and exceptional growth entitlement, uh, that has already been approved. We just need to ask for it.
You know, when you look at this, if somebody looked at it and did know that this was not the total cost of a school.
Yeah.
The match, it's a good bit more than that. This is just dollar for dollar on the state contract.
But when I first started working with capital outlay programs, the state was paying in about forty-two dollars a, a square foot. So now we're up to eighty dollars a square foot.
And that helps.
Over the last twelve, fifteen years, kinda.
Up to.
Made the adjustments where they could each year when they could, unless, like you sure, it's time to bump that number up a little bit.
But then why do we spend on average?
We've been spending probably on average, elementary schools, the last one we did was about ninety-five dollars a square foot, so that was real close. But it was a good market to be building a school at that time. Typically, I'd say our numbers have usually been about one-twenty on average.
Okay.
High schools, we run probably about a hundred forty, a hundred fifty dollars a square foot, middles are one-twenty.
Does that include all the extras?
No.
In the high school, no? That's just for the building? We spend that much more plus than we have to build all the extra stuff, okay?
Like I said, that, when we built West, forty-two million dollars, uh, for that school. That included all parking lots, stadiums, baseball field, softball field, concessions, all those things are part of that construction pa- package. So as we look at breaking out our square footage costs, it is, the site development cost is included with that.
Actually, it's very reasonable.
But we didn't get that much state money for what the question was, basically that.
We spent a hundred and forty, but we only got eighty or seventy or whatever.
They were, they were paying about sixty dollars a square foot when we did West. It costs us about a hundred forty.
When you put everything, all the fields and all that in together, it costs over twice as much almost.
That's right. Uh, I think the state value on that project was about twenty-two million dollars. Then of course, like I said, by the time they pack out our low, you know, twenty percent of what we have to pay, then figure out what they had to pay.
Okay. Thank you. We understand that it takes time, but we just want it now, don't we?
I had it right. Okay, so after we've gone through what we earned state funding for, now we wanted to kinda lead into our local funding options. Because many of you have asked for, you know, are you preparing a list, do you have the list? And so this would be the list, Tim's would be the book that he'll, that he's putting together. So what we're planning to do, um, right now as, uh, staff, is that we're going to pull together a district bond committee. And we're going to look at local funding for new constructions, additions, and modifications that correspond with the facilities plan. And we're also going to use the feedback that we've gathered from the administrators, um, and from the online survey and identify capital improvement needs that are not funded in the two thousand fourteen, nineteen facilities plan. And that will include land for future school sites, CTAE and other instructional needs such as media centers and computer labs, life cycle and preventive maintenance projects that we've not been able to complete, um, technology, and then also transportation. So this is our timeline. Um, we will get together and work this fall, and then we will bring you a draft list in January for you to go through. You will discuss it in February, give us feedback in February, and then we'll go back as a staff and continue to work on the list, bring it back to you in March with some, with your revisions. And then, um, we'll go back to you in April and say, here's the final bond list. You will discuss it then, and then in May we'll approve it. So, and then, right now, we're tentatively scheduled for a bond vote in November. Does that kinda present, you know, how you can see if everything feeds into it, facilities plan, bond, or random? Any recommendations on bond timeline? No? Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we have Mike Evans with an enrollment update. Everybody show up today?
Not everyone, but we're, we're getting there. We have, um, actually had the wonderful opportunity to, uh, experience the registration process for the first time over at the Hill Center. And it has been, uh, quite an eye-opening experience. Because, uh, just some numbers right here, uh, in July, we began tracking numbers, just, these are just appointments that the registrars actually see. In July alone, they registered, uh, over eleven hundred students with actual appointments that, that we set. We have four registrars that, uh, will sit down with each new student, new family sitting down, registering. And in addition to that, we also had two hundred twenty-one walk-ins during the month of July. Of all of those, and in addition to those students that went through the kindergarten roundup, that may have also come through in June. Uh, they also saw an eight hundred and nine return, so if they didn't have all the documentation, uh, they're, they're left with their packet. Go ahead and complete it with a vet immunization, proof of residency, and, uh, items like that. And July, the, basically, the, the five days in July that we were open, there were over four hundred and forty, uh, appointments that they had seen with a hundred and seventy-six walk-ins.
August, you mean?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, within August. Um, so literally, within these last five days, the, the staff over at the registration center just.
How many people do we have registering?
Registering, we have four, we have four, uh, four official registrars. Uh, and this year, we actually, uh, were able to bring on four additional temporary folks to man the phones, uh, to help with the returns also. Um, two of them, uh, yesterday was their last day, and, uh, we have two more of them that'll go for one more week with us to help with the return process. And that's been a significant, uh, benefit because generally, the, the folks that man Infinite Campus and the student information system will help out and, uh, do the registration process also. So that really allowed them to work with the implementation, not only with its learning, but also, uh, parent portal, uh, Infinite Campus. Um, but it was just i- an astounding feat that, uh, the folks alone, they worked together as a great team. Uh, pulled many fourteen, fifteen-hour days to get as many in the system as we could for this first day of school. But, uh, so the start of the, the year enrollment trend, again, we're still continuing to see the, uh, the additional growth. Um, we've been looking at, uh, continuous growth around three percent for the last several years. Um, this year, there's not much of a difference, um, in the growth, we're still seeing the continued growth, and I'll show you where the trend's actually heading also. Uh, with this one, I just wanna give you a glimpse of the growth during the year. So the blue bars represent, uh, each year, what the enrollment started and where it finished. And so we're looking at anywhere from a growth rate of one point two to one and a half percent. So on that same trend, we can expect to probably receive anywhere from four hundred to six hundred new students just this year alone, uh, before the end of the year shows up.
So what we don't know, you showed the high numbers from July and August of enrollment, what we don't really know for a while is those who just, uh, that just chose to move away and not let us know.
Correct, so as of today, we actually had about four, or about fifteen hundred students that were no-shows for today. And now with that, so the numbers alone will actually, uh, increase because with it being a, a Thursday start date. Schools have told us that they already know the, many of the families that are still on vacation, we expect there to be a large increase in attendance on Monday. In addition, uh, yesterday ended one of the religious holiday days, and today also was a celebration that ended the Ramadan holiday. Uh, schools were also notified that, uh, there were families that were out today also. So we expect for the numbers to increase dramatically, uh, as we're looking at it through Monday too.
Something to look at when we do the calendar then, as far as the holiday.
So this is the, the historical growth for where we've been, uh, looking at for the percentiles. And as you can see, back in, uh, two thousand seven, eight, we, that was in our, one of our peak, uh, enrollments, but with the economic downturn. This current year, we're showing a, a slight increase, but once we actually look at the numbers, I think on Monday, the enrollment numbers, that's gonna grow up, uh, quite significantly. And I'll, uh, resubmit, uh, numbers to the board, uh, and to the cabinet also, to give you more accurate numbers, what that reflect for true enrollment numbers come Monday.
Okay.
But, um, when we looked at where we were without, uh, taking out the, um, the students that didn't show up for school today, uh, we were probably about a four percent growth, as opposed to a three percent for the last two years. And, um, and I think some numbers will reflect closer to that number on Monday.
Okay.
I'll tell you how I look at this, instead of growing two schools a year, we're only growing one and maybe a full one this year.
Right.
So we're still growing.
We are still growing, a- and, and the numbers don't lie, and that's in, uh, something that, especially as we're looking at the, um, facilities plans, it's a great thing that we're actually planning ahead, keeping on track of everything. So the actual enrollment numbers, these are the, uh, actual numbers of attendance as of today, uh, compared to the first column, which is the fourth, uh, month projec- projection. And we're not very far off, especially knowing where we're going to be near the end of the year. So, uh, for elementary school, we're just slightly down below the four-month, consider this, considering this, this is the first day of, um, school. So the numbers are, uh, pretty much falling right in line, uh, with the four-month. Uh, again, I'll submit revised numbers to you on Monday, so we can get an, uh, idea of where we truly are once we get through this, um, first weekend. Just a quick little breakdown, we had twenty-one hundred seventy-seven seniors that graduated last year. Um, the numbers of, number of students that actually enrolled from pre-K through high school this year, uh, we had four thousand eight hundred and sixty-four new enrollments to the, to the district. And the breakdown right there is for you also, so you can see that. Uh, again, uh, showing a trend, gaining more kindergartners than we're losing with, uh, with seniors also. Um, so this fits with the typical trend patterns that we're seeing.
Because of growth, they've been previously in the middle on the high school, so it's gone back the other way now, looks like.
Right. Uh, again, the demographic breakdowns, we're still seeing continued growth, especially in, uh, various, um, the Asian population, um, historically down in the south end, that's still growing also. But the, uh, numbers have been consistent with where we've been for the last year across all areas.
Okay.
Specific question for me?
That's it.
Great, I'll look forward to resubmitting that on Monday when we can get some full numbers, thank you.
Good, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Okay, Dr. Norton with a HR update.
Well, just like we don't have enough room, none of the principals have enough people. They would all like to have a few more, but, uh, I think we've got our classrooms filled.
It's so good, Candice, I'm visiting the schools to see what the principals were able to do with their allotments because of A.I. Square and what they were able to create. It's just great.
Well, as you know, ninety percent of our budget is people and time and their benefits. And as our principals utilize their personnel to meet what our goals of our schools are, they've been very creative.
They have been.
In that. And I think it's a wonderful thing that we've been able to have that flexibility and put the resources toward what the needs of the schools are in terms of their own efforts, school improvement plans, and expertise that they have in the building. So that's a good point. Um, we did a conservative enrollment projection and staffing allotment formula, but the board was able to give a two percent raise to all personnel. And that has been much appreciated. About thirty percent of our new educator hires, uh, that certified professional staff are from our substitute par pro or former pool of people that have either moved back or they're stop-out moms that have decided their kids are now in kindergarten and can come back, things like that. We have had significant, as you know from your budget, uh, cost of health benefit and TRS increases this year, but those have been budgeted. The next page I like to show are certified to student, uh, fourth month projection ratio. And when we kind of, uh, decided last year with the number of children we could actually fit in a high school classroom, that we probably meet, reached our max in terms of reasonable allotment formula, that it wouldn't really disrupt the, um, educational process. And so we were able, as a school system, to retain our allotment standards this year in terms of how we allot staff. And that's significant, but I wanted you to see, we're about on par there for our number of certified staff against our projected students. I think if you'll see what's happened over the years, we've been able to do that in open schools, which requires a lot of additional infrastructure staff. For instance, you have to have a new nurse, principal, when you open new buildings, whereas if you don't open new buildings, you don't have to hire that staff. But remember, this number includes not just the teacher when you walk into the third grade classroom with the number of students, or the math teacher. It includes all of your other staff that you need to have. We do think we need some administrators to run our schools. We're very proud, based on the AJC article, to have a very low administrator to student ratio. But we need those people to lead, direct, and ensure sta- safety of our students and so many other things. But this includes your art, music, and P.E. and STEM teachers at the elementary school, and includes your media specialist counselors, instructional technology specialists, your resource teachers in special ed, uh, your speech pathologist, your EIP teachers, your gifted teachers. All of those people are not in that classroom, but they're in the building. So as you add students, you have to add staff in those areas, but we still have retained that formula and managed to increase that. Those are your overall educators that we have. Of the temps and subs, of course, those include not just sub-teachers and par pros, but sub-drivers, sub-nurses, sub-clerical people, sub-food assistants, et cetera, community coaches, and all the other people. Of those, we have five hundred and seventy-six that are professionally certified teachers. Of the two hundred and eighty-three people, we've hired more since that day, but that you met at new educator orientation. Eighty-two were newly budgeted positions, and two hundred and one were replacement positions due to resignation, retirements. It's not unusual to see about half and half, though our allotment formula, we do expect to see slightly smaller sizes in our elementary school. About half of our teachers reside in elementary schools and the other half in six-twelve. But we hired eighty-five new regular ed, general ed, uh, classroom teachers, and about eighty, middle, high, and the major content areas. About fifty-six special education teachers, uh, and five speech people. Uh, twelve language folks, as you can see, mostly Spanish teachers, CTAE, and a sprinkling of other folks. And that's where some of them are from, we do steal from our neighbors, we like that, uh, a few other states. And our primary producers for our initial teachers, though we have a lot of partners that continue to educate us, our teachers, as they continue to gain education, add new credentialing areas, become leaders, et cetera, they're still North Georgia and UGA. Once again, as you mentioned, uh, Ms. Crowe, we are, uh, we are blessed to have the flexibility from the state board and state law that does allow our folks to utilize the personnel we have by not requiring us to hire personnel in some areas and to flex our allotments in other areas to meet the needs of the school. We continue to be the largest school system in Georgia with a hundred percent highly qualified staff that are certified and assigned in field. Later on, we'll be talking more at the state level about highly effective teachers. But right now, uh, we talk about highly qualified. Uh, there's two primary areas that impact the human resources arena this year. Uh, one is more Georgia, and one is more of a national thing. Uh, the Georgia, uh, area is not all, but the great majority of our teachers and principals and assistant principals will be evaluated by a new, uh, teacher in leader instruments. We call those teaks and leaks. Um, and, uh, there's also a new federal law that was passed in ten, tested by the Supreme Court, proved to be valid, and will go into effect January one, two thousand fourteen, except for the penalty phase. That's called the Affordable Care Act. Um, and there's significant requirements on the healthcare providers, in this case, right now for our employees. It's what we call the State Health Benefit Plan, run by the Department of Community Health. There's been some issues with the letting of that, that, uh, uh, actual providers there, but all of them are gonna have to come in line with the federal law. We have, um, so there's impact on the providers, the plans themselves, employers, and employees. This will be significant for school systems, and, um, we're having to look at that now, even though there's no penalty to plan for how we might change some things in the future. And I'll address some of that briefly. In terms of the Forsyth County approach to what we are doing, in terms of the teaks and leaks, all of our leaders that have to be credentialed will know how to utilize the inform, instrument, they're being trained. They have been started to be trained, they will continue to be trained through the month of August, and then throughout the year on the leader instrument. And they will all have to take a test and be credentialed to use it. Uh, we will also have to have a continuity plan in place to train and continue to train our new leaders. plan in place to train and continue to train our new leaders throughout in terms of both the teacher and leader instrument, each principal and their leadership team has determined how to introduce TEACs at their school, based on what they're currently doing with their school improvement plan, we did not want it to be disruptive, we wanted it to dovetail with their current efforts, because we, we like the new instrument, we think it's very valuable, and we wanted to not have it like be something that set aside what we were alre- already doing, so they have very different ways of doing that, and I know they'll be discussing that at the schools and then their local school councils. And our current instrument that's official for this year is still the PAC and LAC, but those that use the standards and the observation tools and any other measures in the TEACs instrument will help inform the PAC for this year and the LAC. We do have a couple of concerns, primarily about the instrument that our system will have to look at, but I think it's a statewide issue, one is that half the instrument is observation, half is looking at student growth, and the student growth measures are coming for about thirty percent of our teachers through state tests with CRCTs and the, and of course, tests, and that will make it more of a statewide focus, regardless of where our teachers come from, that will be the standard, but right now, each school system is being expected to develop measures for all other classes that are taught at every grade level as an individual school system, to develop measures pre and post-test and put those in place, we, it's a capacity issue in terms of what we think is important, and we also had, have concerns about the development and reliability and validity of those and the fairness of that over time, since it's really a state instrument, so we're still going to do what we need to do, but try to put the resources that we have that are available there, which aren't extensive at the central level in assessment and curriculum in terms of developing that.
Is there a timeline on that, Candy?
Allegedly, we're supposed to have a slow, they call it, this is the measures in place for non-state tested areas for at least one per teacher by school year two thousand fourteen, fifteen, our training for that won't occur for our system level for a small group until September, October, and November, and then we're supposed to have that turnaround, we are significantly trying to discuss at the state level that the state takes some initiative and pull this together at the state level, and we would very much support that effort, but, but we want to make it very clear that we support the instrument, we think it's a good tool, we think it's in the right direction, and we think it will add value to our schools, we just want to make it so good that we want to make sure there's a feeling of reliability and fairness in a statewide perspective.
Oh yeah, if it comes out and it's not done right, that would just be negative to start off with.
Yes.
And I suspect the state has the same capacity problems as we would in, in developing that test on top of everything.
Originally, originally, the direction was at the state level, but it kind of morphed to the local.
Because they don't have the staff to do it either, because you're talking about a whole realm of, of classes that are not the main.
I don't, I don't know of any more important work at the state level, though.
That's true.
And I think it's only valuable to be able to say as an educator, I do not mind being measured on how well my system does, how well my school does, or how well my students do, I just want to make sure that it's fair and valid and acceptable, and a chemistry teacher across the state, probably we could come up with a state tool to measure chemistry pre and post, I mean, you know, you're not talking about something significantly different, it's, it's kind of odd to me to have a hundred and eighty systems develop a pre and post-test for chemistry one.
Oh, that's true.
So, anyway, we'll, we'll deal with that as we always do professionally and, and see what we can do at the state level to make sure we ensure we have a good instrument. The, I don't want to talk a lot about the thirty thousand pages of regulations in the Affordable Care Act, but I will say one thing, the way that we're going to determine who an employee is in the future, under the definitions that there will be broadened, for example, right now it's anybody that works thirty hours a week, well, that would mean an awful lot of our subs we would then have to give insurance to, so does that change the way we're going to allow our subs to work, like only four days a week, what happens for long term, so there's things like that that are going to be fleshed out, that we'll be looking at as a school system before next fall in terms of how we operate based on how the rules finally come down, I do think we'll see some federal changes.
That has got to be.
But that's not Forsyth County issue, it's, it's an issue across the country, so I did want to make you aware of it though, because the way, not just what it will be, but the way we look at that and whether outsourcing really will prove to be better.
Right.
And those sorts of things, we'll certainly keep our eyes on that, and just a few notes at the end, we are continuing to outsource particularly in custodial services, as you can imagine, sometimes in our county, regardless of who's providing those, it's still difficult to fill the positions and have the staff present, it's very difficult in our county, other, compared to surrounding counties to do that, we don't tend to have the large labor pool that we need at that level, so we'll continue to look at those to see if we can reduce costs to our system in that way, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next we have future agenda items, does anybody have anything?
Looks like our plates fall.
It seems like we're good.
What we saw today.
Okay, and before we go into executive session, I just want to point out that we do have Mike Royal here from the State Board of Education, District Seven.
And I've got a full list, too.
We are so glad you're here, and we're, we're glad to know that, that you care about what we say and what we think, and that you're listening to us, and we appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, Mike.
So we're glad you're here, now, if I have a motion, we'll go into executive session for personnel and a tribunal appeal.
So moved.
Second, a motion by Tom and a second by Kristen.
All in favor, unanimous?
With Nancy Epps.
That's right.